All right. We're gonna get started if everybody wants to come in and get a seat or.
Light seats down here in front.
Plenty of room. All right. Everybody, welcome. This is a regular scheduled board meeting for Edgewood City Schools. Mrs. Bowers, would you call role, please?
Mr. Gabbard.
Present.
Mrs. Ashkaff.
Present.
Mr. Messerschmidt.
Present.
Mr. Pressler.
Here.
Mr. York.
Present.
Would you please stand for the pledge and remain standing?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we humbly come to you today asking your guidance, your wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, your mercy, and your peace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect the students, the staff, the faculty, alumni, and friends of this school district and community. And continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for your glory, and for the service of those in this community. We ask these things in your son's precious name. Amen.
Thank you. I'm gonna look for an approval of the board agenda as amended, which include item sixty and a field trip add. Mr. Pressler, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. York. Mrs. Bowers, would you call role?
Mr. Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. York.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mrs. Ashkaff.
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt.
Yes.
Motion carries side zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. President, members of the board, it gives me great pleasure to introduce to you our athletic director, Mr. Larry Cox, who's gonna talk about our winter sports and the recognition of several students. So, welcome, Larry. If you'd like the microphone, it's right over here.
Not sure I need this or not, but uh, I project pretty well. Uh, but we want to recognize uh, our spring sport athletes who, who earned all SWAC honors. And we're fortunate that a number of them were able to attend today. So, if I call your name, would you please stand also? And would ask that you save your applause to the end, but thanks for the recognition uh, what we're doing and, and how our student athletes are achieving, uh, both academically and in the classroom, man, out in the community. So, I'll start with uh, boys' basketball. First team, we have senior Peyton Smith. Honorable mention Colton Hunt. Sportsmanship Evan Schwartz. And girls' basketball, we had junior Riley Holman. Made first team. Second team Ella Allen, who's a freshman. Our honorable mention was Maddie Judd. And our sportsmanship award went to Jessica Moore. For wrestling, we had the wrestler of the year Wyatt Walker. And he's coming back next year. He also made first team Paul Swak, as well as Aiden Raider, who's a senior. Our second team wrestlers were Hector Yanez, who's a senior, and Isaiah Nichols, who's a sophomore, and Seth Lee, who is a senior. Honorable mention Kobe Salyers, who's a sophomore. Our sportsmanship award also went to Aiden Raider. In boys' swimming, second team Wyatt Phillips. Honorable mention Yuri Barr. Sportsmanship Lucas Hay. Girls' swimming, second team Julianne Hopson. Honorable mention Hope Plogman and sportsmanship Lauren Kenny. On our bowling team, well represented here tonight. Uh, girls' bowling, second team Annalise Bunger. Honorable mention Liberty Troutman. Sportsmanship award Gracie McQueen. On our bowls, our boys' bowling team, first team Michael Marks. Second team and sportsmanship award went to Trent Stewart, and honorable mention went to Brandon Williams. Our academic team, we had the coach of the year Shelley Steele was the coach of the year. First team was Casey Chapman. Second team Aaron Castro. Honorable mention Courtney Moore. And our sportsmanship award went to Aaron Bolt.
Do we have any coach that's in the room or a player that stood up to stand up so we can applaud them? I'm impressed. Thank you for representing Edgewood City School District so well. You make us proud.
Mrs. Bybee, I think there is a swimmer going to college to swim, right?
What?
Yes.
Yeah. Julianne, West Virginia someplace.
Uh, yes, Davis Malcolm's College.
That's amazing. Congratulations. Do we have any other players?
I'm going to Bluffton next year.
Awesome. Very good. Do you know what you're majoring in?
What?
Do you have any idea what you're gonna major in yet?
Business administration.
Business administration and?
Uh, psychology or criminology.
Amazing. Good, good. Any other players that are going to college that they know where they're going? Well, you, again, congratulations. We're very excited for you, and you make us look good.
Real quickly, if I can interject, uh, Pam would like to take a picture also of the student athletes that were mentioned that are here tonight. Um, so just wanted to get that information out to you. And just a quick aside, I talked about the academic side. This will be going out soon. I'm gonna be giving Pam the information. But our spring sports, third quarter team GPAs, three point two six. For all spring sports, the team GPAs average is three point two six.
Do you guys think we're honored to stand up there for the board for just a minute?
Is the board wanting to get in with this?
No, they're kinda lying.
I think they're very uncomfortable with that or?
Can we stand up?
Yeah, so they're gonna be nice. Why don't they come up here? Let's get them up on the stage.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, come up on the stage or staircases, or you can do that. Or has it in the middle here? And I'll get back here.
There we go.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Well, our next presentation, if you don't mind, I'm gonna move right into that. Uh, when I came to Edgewood, I noticed that we had majority of our students not enlisting, not enrolling in college. Majority of our career, uh, set in our community. And met with Mr. Rick Pierce from the Chamber of Ox, oh, sorry, Middletown, Monroe, and Trenton. And uh, I have to tell you, Rick, I was impressed. I'm not aware of any other chamber president that has quite put together the formula that you've done for this area. So, thank you for coming in. And please share what you've been doing and what you're gonna do for Edgewood moving forward.
Yeah, thank you. So, to reiterate, my name is Rick Pierce. Uh, I'm the Chamber Executive for Middletown, Monroe, and Trenton. I'll be celebrating my tenth year this June. Uh, we've been working in workforce for nine years. Um, as Superintendent Spivey said, it kinda accidentally happened. There are not many of my colleagues doing this, so I'm gonna try to keep this quick and moving forward. It's hard to condense. Uh, nine years in nine minutes. If my buttons move properly, great. In the handouts that I gave you, um, there are some highlights, uh, from our workforce timeline. We started out in twenty fourteen by doing Manufacturing Day. Uh, that was the first Friday in October. We have since expanded that to uh, Manufacturing Month to all the Fridays in October to introduce our students from our four school districts, one of which you guys are. The other ones being Madison, Monroe, and Middletown. In twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, we developed what's called the Future Ready Skill Set. That's in your packet as well. It's where we work with uh, members of the manufacturing and healthcare community to come up with a skill set that they needed in employees in ten years. That was adopted by seventeen employers. Those are in the handout as well. Um, the districts that have adopted that, uh, by the board and to their graduation standards are Monroe, Madison, and Middletown. Middletown has since, uh, based their entire six-year strategic plan on that skill set, so we're extremely excited about that. In uh, twenty twenty, we developed what's called, um, the Skills to Careers. It's a piece of interesting software. Uh, we don't actually own it. We are leasing it from a company in Idaho called Lightcast. And what that does is matches job seekers to employers, job seekers with skills to employers who need the skills. So, what we have determined in working in this in nine years, it's all about skills. It's not about degrees. It's not about degree names. It's not about job titles and job names. Whether or not the individual has the skills for that position. So, uh, currently, we are working in twenty twenty-three, uh, in a pilot program for, um, Skills to Careers to get all juniors and seniors within our four districts into the system, um, for their skills profile. I've identified about eight companies that we're working with, um, rewriting some of their job descriptions according to skill sets. And then I'm gonna show a little demonstration later on how we can get into the system to identify those students so the businesses can start recruiting them. This is a little excerpt.
Yes.
This is a little excerpt that we did, um.
Well, thank you, Caroline, and thank you, Wendy. Staying with the theme of removing barriers, I'm pleased to welcome Chandler Wurst, the head of North American Public Policy at Workday. Chandler, welcome. Thanks for joining us today. But let me just share.
Uh, Chandler couldn't make that zoom in.
Was it saying he also Chandler?
From a year ago. Uh, but this is Neil Bradley. He's a vice president with the United States Chamber of Commerce in Washington, DC. And he's gone in to encapsulate, uh, what the challenges are with the workforce.
I'm with you. What Chandler hoped to share with the audience. We know that connecting someone with a job is about making a match. It's an employer who's looking for a particular type of person with the skill sets that they need for the job, and finding that person who has that skill set. And so, when there's a breakdown in communications, employers not adequately describing the jobs uh, and the skills that they're looking for in a new employee, and when employees don't describe their skills in a way that employers understand, you get friction in the system. And that friction in the system makes it hard for people to find jobs that they're qualified for and for employers to find qualified workers. We can do a much better job connecting people to the jobs that they're qualified for and connecting employers with the jobs that they have hoped.
So, in seventy-three seconds, Neil tells us the problem. Employers don't know what they're looking for in a workforce. Individuals don't know what skills they have to go out and find employment. And we don't know where to go to get the skills that we need. So, we're trying to get education, our employers and our individuals, all to talk the same language of skill sets. So, what I'm gonna do next is take you through a short exercise of this. So, we first rolled the software out in July of twenty twenty. We've been working on this for three years this summer. In April of twenty twenty-one, we introduced it to our members, um, trying to get individuals to get into the system to save their skill sets. This is brand-new technology. There's only six of us across the country that are piloting this, so you're not gonna hear this everywhere. It matches candidates to the skill sets that employers need. At that point in time, job seekers were leading the process. And as I shared with Lightcast, which is the company who is running the software now, I said, employers are more motivated to find workers than workers are to find positions. I said, so we need to make this employer-focused. So, um, that's one of the things that I'm gonna get into next.
So, this is the actual software that does the matching?
Yes. What Superintendent Spivey's passing out is a, um, job description based on one of our employers in the program. Uh, one side is a material handler. The other side should be a material expediter. The technology also shares between how many different titles a position has, and I show that to the employer. But as you look at this, you see it's all about skills. All of, all of the extraneous terminology has been removed, like individual has to work with such and such departments. That's usually under collaboration. So, you'll see how simple this is after you break it down and you just get the skill sets. So, I'm gonna type in a couple of basic skill sets across the top. So, as I keyed in computer lit, as I keyed in computer literacy, is that working?
Yep.
You can, you can see how a list pops up, and I'm gonna further continue it. Does it print computer literacy now?
It does.
So, now I'm searching for those individuals with communications and computer literacy skills. Go next to detail-oriented. Notice I don't have to key it on it. It automatically indexes. Next item will be lifting. So, with this position, uh, material handler or material expediter, we've narrowed this down to the skill sets that you have on your sheet. I work with the employer to come up with the basic skills, so there's basically four of them. With the individuals that we've done this to, you can see the, uh, last active date on the right-hand side, which is when the, uh, junior or senior filled that out. That automatically gives me a list of how many skills that matches. And I export this list to the employer, and they are free to recruit.
What are local, um, businesses saying? Do they have more jobs available than people applying?
Yes. And that's due, and that's due to all kinds of different factors. After twenty twenty and the pandemic, the workforce changed drastically. And people are just now trying to understand what in the world just happened.
So, Rick, is this available? Can our students, as they get closer to graduation, start logging into this?
So, so you are part of our pilot program. I did speak to Principal, uh, Dagan, um, and Jane about three weeks ago on this program, so they have their juniors and seniors into it. Um, so some of those dates up there, according, at least in March of twenty twenty-three, are probably your students. So, the answer is yes.
We had all of our juniors and seniors in their Agoes class fill out the survey.
Which holds it on strengths and skill sets.
I skipped the survey that covers, uh, thirty questions on the Holland Interest Assessment, and then the individual selects their skills from there. The software needs about thirty-five set of skills to come up with a good idea of what this individual looks like.
So, the businesses you're working with, if they have vacancies, they're gonna go to this, and then they can pull in our students if they match, if they're a good match?
Technically, yes, but what really happens is I'm gonna go between and helps them rewrite their job description with another piece of software.
Gotcha.
Some people call the soft, call the job title by the wrong name and don't use the right skill set to find it with this software.
Okay. So, how many students do you think have been employed through these efforts? You've been, I see that, um, Middletown, Monroe, did I see Madison on there as well?
Madison, Madison, they've all, they've all, they're all in this pilot program.
But about how many students have been placed with jobs?
We're not there yet.
Oh, see, I wanna jump right to that. Okay.
And the other piece, and the other piece of software, the process was all upon the job seekers.
Okay.
They were in charge. Now, the employer's in charge. So, I've already shared some of these names with the employers, and I said, you're now free to recruit. Whether or not they've gone through with it yet, I don't know.
Is there a way to track that once?
We're tracking it. Cause I know where they are, and I know where to find them, and I know how to get a hold of them.
So, Rick, what were you saying is the vision of employment for this year, for next year? What, what are we, what's our vision? We talked about T-shirts and salaries and placement. When you think that will come about?
This is the worst and the ugliest this will ever look, was when you first rolled it out. So, it only gets better from here. There's been a lot of papers written on skills-based hiring and having some of the employers do away with their hiring software where weeds out individuals who don't have college degrees but got great skills, working elsewhere, perhaps even in the military, where this is the go-between between that. Um, we can also hold accountable our educators on what skills are they actually teaching. So, there's another piece of software in here called Skillavine. So, as I talk to post-secondary providers, if I give their course description, their syllabus, and their curriculum, the software can get scanned in the system, and it will return a skill set that an individual learns from taking one class, multiple classes, or even an entire major. And then when, the part of the software that you did not see is as I key my skills in, and I'm finished and I've built my profile, it will come up with a match within the area. Now, currently, Lightcast is scanning for me all the jobs in Montgomery County, Butler County, Warren County, and Hamilton County. And that's gotta be at least two hundred thousand of the positions. So, it only shows me on the screen what jobs don't qualify for. If there's skills up there that I don't have that I want, when I key it into the upskilling part, it shows me the educational provider that teaches it.
That's nice. Very nice.
So, this, this is way ahead of what anything else that's out there. So, if this sounds crazy, you're right.
We're building it as we're going, but the intent is that we do a better job placing students, our sixty percent that are not attending college with an employer.
Or the forty that are.
Yes, yes.
Yes, with an employer, with a local employer. Now, I realize that not everybody's gonna stay here, but if we don't start growing our own workforce, we're not gonna have any business here. We're not gonna have anybody living here. We gotta have people going to school here. We gotta start building our own because there's no one else out there saying, hey, why don't you move to Southwest Ohio? They got great weather. We've seen, we've seen over the last couple of weeks that we don't have great weather. So, it's pretty interesting software. I think this is the future, um, in job recruitment and job placement.
Hey, any last-minute thoughts or questions for Rick?
It's glad to see you in here. I know you've been trying to get, get in here to talk to us for a while. Glad to have you here.
Yeah, thanks for having me. Yeah, thanks for letting me give my day.
We like pilots. I agree with all your advice.
Pilot program allows you to screw up and then fix it and then move on. So, let's wait for pilot number two.
So, Rick, is, are you working with Butler Tech at all in any of this?
Yes.
What, what are you doing with Butler Tech?
Well, trying to get some of their curriculum into this. So, currently, um, a lot of our employees are either manufacturing and healthcare. So, they teach all the introductory certifications for healthcare. They have a lot of those for manufacturing as well. Just getting their curriculum and getting their students into the system so it can place people according to skill sets. Some people will adopt it quicker than others, so it just takes time. It's, it's new. And anything new is always a little hesitant.
Well, we appreciate everything you're doing, and thank you for being one of the six in the nation piloting this and bringing it to our area.
Well, thank you for participating in, in Principal Dagan, Dagan, thank him too. So, thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Rick. I guess once you do the job, it's worth it.
Doug's exactly right. Or lead someone closer to what identifying is.
I'm gonna do the presentation. I didn't have anybody sign up for public participation. So, Mrs. Bowers, we will move to treasurer items, please.
Uh, Mr. Gabbard, I would like to block items A, B, and C. That's the board, board minutes from the regular board meeting February the twenty-seventh, the special board meeting on March fifteenth, and the special board meeting on March the twenty-fifth. And I'd like to ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
Can I get a motion to approve the three A, B, and C blocked together? So, Mr. York, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt.
Mrs. Bowers, would you call role, please?
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashkaff?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries side zero. The next agenda item, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the February twenty twenty-three financial reports as presented.
Looking for a motion to approve the February financial reports as presented.
Seven.
Mrs. Ashkaff, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt. Any discussion? Mrs. Bowers? I, I do the then and now POs. I, I don't understand what the then and now, what, what does that mean?
Things that are not on time.
Yeah.
Within regulated timelines. And that's stuff that shows up with the auditor, so you don't want to have them, but from time to time, from then and now, we will. Do you have any, any other?
Uh, I was trying to find it in the nearest attachment. What, and I, I would like to explain something. Um, one of the things I've been working with, and you're gonna hear a lot more about this as we move forward tonight. Um, we have some blanket POs and things like that, um, that just hang in encumber money and give them our current financial situation. I've asked them to not put in as many blanket POs, and we're trying to work to close those so that our funds are not encumbered. Um, so what happens at the beginning of the year, and we'll do it, for example, for Duke Energy, and we'll open up a big blanket PO. We know we're going to pay them hundreds of thousands of dollars for the year. And I have asked, uh, my staff to start doing that based on a three-month window. Um, so we will see four different purchase orders for those big-ticket items just to help us better streamline in the treasurer's office so that I know more about what's coming and going rather than opening something at the beginning of the year and letting it light all year. So, what I can tell you about some of these then and now POs, that's exactly what happened. At the beginning of the year, we opened a blanket, and rather than going back and to continue adding lines to it, I've asked for a brand-new one because I don't see those added lines, and I want to know every dollar coming and going. So, we, we will probably see more of this as we work through and, uh, close out this school year, but that's the reason for it.
Obviously, the Duke is a blanket PO, right?
We have, we have a lot of blankets, and I, I'm not opposed to using them for those big-ticket items. But again, I don't want them open and encumbering our funds for the whole school year. So, we will be seeing more purchase orders coming out. I'm just. whole school year. So we will be seeing more purchase orders coming out, just because I want to streamline and, and have a better flow of our cash flow, and know what's coming and going. So typically, and this had just happened with Duke Energy, and that's why it's on there, we would go back and accounts payable, when she would make the check, she would add a line to that purchase order, and I've asked, don't do that anymore. I want a new purchase order to come in. I want it to come through SCU, and then I see everything. I have to approve it before we can do anything. Just getting a better handle, like I said, on our cash flow so that I know what dollars are coming and going.
So I've looked at some of these. They've got like February dates on them. Some of them have March dates on them. Are these, are these to get us to the end of the year? What's the, is, I mean, I don't think most of these are done.
Some of them may, some of them are not. It depends on what was left on that PO. So we may have an open purchase order that had twenty-five hundred dollars left on it from the initial approval. If we get a bill for three thousand dollars, rather than going in and adding a line to that PO, I will, I've asked them to put in a new requisition, let's get another PO in process, for what we think might go through the end of the year, if we think something else is gonna come through. We don't always know that. I, I've been going through open purchase orders, a lot the last week, trying to get things closed out, just like I said, because we're encumbering money and I need to have a better feel for where we are. So some of these may be to last through the rest of the year. That Duke Energy is probably not. I, I know that's very high, but that, that's one of our highest bills that we have here. So.
And that's also been negotiated, correct?
Yes, yep.
Negotiated down?
Yes.
So, so going forward on POs, who, who approves the POs? Is that, is that ultimately coming to you now, is that the way that's working?
What happens, let's say, for example, we have someone in the, in the building that puts in a requisition that they wanna buy something. Let's say it's a secretary that needs to buy office supplies. She would put in the requisition, it would go to the building principal first. They would approve it. Once the building principal approves it, it comes into my workflow. And then I go in and I check for account numbers and check fund balances and make sure that we have the money there to cover it. Once I approve it, then it goes to Kelly for final approval. Once Kelly approves it, then it goes back into accounts payable, gets converted from a requisition to a purchase order.
Okay. And that's the same, is that the same process with like contracts and things like that?
Yes, yes. So if it's, for example, Butler County or Warren County, and it's a special education piece, it would go through Lindsay because she is the department head for special education, then it comes to me, and then it goes to Kelly. Just, we have different workflows in there. It just depends on who the supervisor is. I get a lot of the maintenance things, or Miss Beck, it might get a lot of the maintenance things, but it goes through that same basic path.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
May, may I interrupt just for a second? I didn't want the athletes to feel that they were hostage. If you'd like to take it up and go work on your homework or take care of anything, feel free to do so, okay? If not, you're welcome to stay.
And, and really, the building principals aren't flying blind on, on approving these cause Mr. Phil Bot will know how much money he has in a, a budget, and will be able to judge accordingly. I'm just figuring on these curves cause you're right there in front of it. But he knows, he knows what his budget looks like, and then, and whatever line it's coming out of, he'll know. If he, if he doesn't have money, he's not gonna approve that purchase order and send it forward.
So SCU is fairly new to us. This is, we don't have a whole year on it, so we just started it. But once we get, we're gonna be working over spring break on budgets for next year. Once we get everything set in there, I can actually go in and check a bot that says they can't even put in a rec if there's no money in the fund that they're trying to charge it to. So that, that's my goal. That will be there for the next visit.
Thank you. Will, will you please call the roll, Mrs. Bowers?
Yes. Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Question carries five zero. The next item, I would like to ask for a motion to approve two donations, one for sixty dollars and one for a hundred and fifty dollars to help with student lunch charges.
Can I get a motion to approve the donations of sixty and a hundred and fifty dollars for school lunches? So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft. Just wanna thank who, I mean, I can read off who it was, Mr. Mrs. Cadiff and Jacksonburg United Methodist Church. Thank you very much for that. And Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Question carries five zero.
Have we sent him a letter and all that? Thank you.
Yes, okay. The next agenda item, I would like to ask for a motion to approve forecasting software for February twenty-four.
Can I get a motion to approve forecasting software? Somebody. Mr. Pressler, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt. Is this replacing the current?
Yes.
Cost? Close to the same or about the same or cheaper?
This is a little bit more. There's just more within.
Okay. So is this more kind of the standard other districts are using?
Um, this actually does tax budgets and everything. There are a lot of districts on this. A lot of districts around here that I've actually been working with are on this software.
It's fifty-fifty probably.
And this is what you, you want this?
This is what I would like to have, yes.
Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll?
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Question carries five zero. The next agenda item, I would like to ask for a motion for approval of the rates and amounts.
Looking for an approval of the rates and amounts for twenty-two-three. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Yeah, sorry.
Mr. Pressler? Questions? This is what was drawn in to us. This was from our SCI. Just so, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of people here about expenses and everything that's being discussed. We've got a bond that's coming off in twenty-two-four, which is an expense that we will no longer have to pay. Believe it or not, that we've been paying on that for the last twenty-six years. So that's kind of how it works. So.
What was that bond for, Mr. Gabbard?
Um, I believe that was for the addition on the current middle school, would be the auditorium, the gymnasium, and the, the wing.
Also include renovations to seven mile payback?
Yes, yes, that was the big, that was the big one. So I, I've got a question, just to make sure I understand how this works. So the renewal levy that's in twenty-two-four is a five point six. That, that's mills, I'm assuming, right? And this bond levy is just under four?
That's, yeah, the five point six is the knowledge rate. And then over in the tax year where it expires, that shows where it comes off. It's got the, the voted-in date. If you look under where it says type, it shows you right there if it was an addition. The Bs are the two bonds that we have, and then the E was the emergency. That's the bond that's going to come off in twenty-two-four.
In your five-year forecast, how does, that's all, all this is reflected?
Yes, yep.
Well, the elephant in the room is, are we gonna need to try to pass a levy to renew that, or will we leave that off?
We'll have to renew the bond.
The bond, we cannot.
No, not for an issue. Yeah, I get, that's the question I was trying to figure out, referring that to ask that question. Are we gonna need to renew that levy in twenty-two-four if this bond falls off?
In twenty-five?
Twenty-four, it was in the month.
But expires in twenty-four, so we would have to ask for new money then in twenty-five. I, I don't want to tell you that we're not gonna have to do that because we have another five-year forecast coming up in due in May. Obviously, in three years prior even to this year, we have been deficit spending, um, yeah, so like in fiscal year twenty-twenty, we were deficit spending three point nine million. In fiscal year twenty-one, we were deficit spending one point one million. And then in fiscal year twenty-two, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand. We would have been deficit spending more than that had we not received COVID monies. But this year, we're forecast to deficit spend, that's gonna be between one and one point three million and one point six million. So I don't, I don't wanna tell you right now that we can't do that. I would love to tell you that we're not gonna have to ask for anything in the next four years, but I wanna get the opportunity to work and get this May forecast filed and see where we actually land this year. Obviously, again, the elephant in the room, we're on the ballot May second. That levy is, it plays such an important part. There are just too many moving pieces here right now. That is huge for this district, and it, it will change. So.
Also, the new budget being issued. They haven't voted on it yet, so we're not even sure. That's another variable. Will we get the monies that they're saying we'll get in the new budget?
And they are the legislators, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was asking to ask that question.
They have a tendency to pull the sausage on finances. Sorry.
Cause I, I even probably hadn't looked out at it that far, but they, they seem very similar in village. And I was hoping you could tell me that.
And I would love to do that, but I, I do not want to tell you something and have to turn around and come back and say, I don't wanna do that.
Uh, thank you for that.
Let, let, let's revisit this in May.
Nice gift to come through through for, right?
So you have your new software to do the forecast that you're gonna present to us in May, but you'll have it in time to do that?
I'm hoping so. With the approval, I'll go back and start sending things in, and I'm hoping to have both of them right side by side to get a better idea. Just with so many moving pieces, I, I don't wanna promise something and not come through on it. I would just rather tell you upfront, this is where we're at. We're gonna do everything we can do to not have to come back. We.
The problem is not the software, or not having the software, or having the software. It's what you plug into the software is what you plug.
Well, I understand that, but I, I think we're, I, I like this newer software. I mean, it seems like you've been using from other districts, and it seems like it gives us more visibility on our money.
It's, it's a lot more robust, absolutely.
So I, I just, what I'm saying is, is I want the best information possibly, and we look at this in May, and it sounds like this is gonna do that.
We have learned so much coming through this, but with all of the moving pieces, it's.
That is the plan, but not knowing what inflation's gonna be, not knowing if we're gonna get the dollars that are promised, not knowing unfunded mandates that may come down the pipe. We don't wanna sit today, two, two years before and say it's off.
Okay, that's fair.
If ever you go out in a forecast, and next year's gonna be, you know, more accurate than the year after, than the year after, so.
Patty, what you're trying to do is, though, like the person spins plates on a stick and juggle balls on the side, and keep the plates spinning. Because you don't get the information that you need in a timely fashion. So I, kudos to you for, that's what you do.
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. Bowers, do you call, is that, are we good with that? Mrs. Bowers, do you call the roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Question carries five zero.
The next agenda item is just informational items. We'll go into this into, in a lot more detail here when we get done this Friday, so I'm not gonna go into a lot right now. But just wanna remind everyone that our base cost to educate our pupils is seven thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars. The state aid that we get for a student is four thousand seventeen dollars, leaving three thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars on the local capacity. So basically, after we get our state aid, they want the local, locals to step in and pick up the balance. So it, it is almost half what we are expected to cover to educate our students. So it, it's not that anybody's doing anything wrong here. I feel like we've done a lot. We're fiscally responsible, but at the end of the day, the state still expects us to pay about half to educate our students. So I, I just wanted to share that with you and.
It's a good reminder.
Yeah.
You all said something that I think most people that aren't in education don't know what, what it is, and that's unfunded mandates. And to give the audience an idea of what that, what that can mean, we, the schools, we're required to give every junior the ACT. That's an unfunded mandate. It costs money to give the ACT. There are certain rules about how you administer the ACT. You can't have anything going on. You guys can do that. You can give me more about that, but I know that we couldn't have other students in the building. Nobody could move around. You had to have so many people at table. You can't have one of four or five. You gotta have them all spread out. Buy the test, score the test. Nobody gives you the money to do that, and that we're told we have to do it. Now, here's an interesting thing. I don't know if y'all read this in the paper or on the news. Miami University doesn't require an ACT to go, to be accepted there. So why, there's just one of many universities that don't require the ACT. Why are we still required to give the ACT? Don't know. But that, those, those are unfunded mandates.
Well, just the reading program that was approved several months ago, where we took money from one place, moved it towards reading, got rid of coaches, whatnot. Now we're learning that that's an unfunded mandate. Thank goodness we already purchased it and got rid of different options and programs to make it happen. But that's a huge cost. That's hundreds of thousands of dollars that you do not have budgeted when these guidelines or laws come down the pipe.
We're really lucky we bought the right program, too, because it could have been the one.
Exactly the right program.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowers.
These were superintendent items. I would like to propose item six A. Last month, we talked about policy seven, five, ten, the use of district buildings is basically what this is. And we talked about requiring a background check to accompany anyone that wants to use our facilities specifically when it involves our own community and our students. So this would be a second reading, and I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Looking for a motion to approve policy number seven, five, one, zero, which is the use of the district premises. Somebody. Mr. Pressler, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt. And you, you already touched on it, I think, with having people get checked before they are around our kids. I think it's a great idea. So, Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Mr. York?
Yes.
Question carries five zero. Next items, I'd like to propose blocking items six B and C. This will involve our day field trips as well as our overnight. They will involve a trip to the art museum, second grade field trip, Richards, that's part of a, a class that they attend, and Wit's Ice Cream, that's part of their hiking, I believe they do, and this is a tradition, a first grade zoo trip, as well as an updated cheer camp request. Our overnight field trips involve a DECA to international career development, which is in Orlando, April of, of next month, as well as the FFA convention in May.
We'll look for a motion to approve six total field trips as presented. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft. These are pretty routine field trips. We do them every year. I don't think there's anything new here.
Are we seeing a reform? You should see that it's all on district form. We sent several back, and yes. Okay, I thought that was.
Looks a little different. I'll be going to the zoo field trips.
Oh, right.
My first long, and then you like kids, so I'm excited.
And did we get your backup?
Make sure, make sure we have it now.
Okay, well, make sure. Don't be ridiculous.
They mailing it back?
He wasn't allowed in the building one day, right? Cause he didn't know you were.
Yeah, actually, twice that's happened to me. I went to.
Yeah, actually twice that's happened to me. I went to go pick up my kids at the school and now with security the way it is, I couldn't even get them. I had to go up to the, I was a little bit frustrated, but I give props to the schools for doing a good job and, and not just releasing my kids to me without verifying exactly who I am. But it, it definitely was frustrating.
Obviously, people don't intend on working, right?
Yeah, I know, I know. I was like, really?
Probably thought you were senior in the high school.
Sir, can I see your ID? Like, oh.
Well, I think the superintendent was guilty of that one still.
Yeah.
All right, next item.
All right, Mrs. Bowers, would you call roll please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Ashcroft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Before I put this motion towards the board, I wanna speak to the community on behalf of the district. This, uh, item has caused a lot of sleepless nights. I have to assure you. That when I came to the district and saw that we were in a one point five deficit, one point five million deficit spending, year two of a five-year forecast. I was concerned, um, wondering how that would happen. And it certainly makes sense in regard to inflation and lack of funding from sources that, like the Rocky Pipeline. However, as I've been digging deeper into the budget, we have been deficit spending for so long. I'm certainly not a treasurer, but my humble opinion, we should have been on the ballot a long time ago. And I say it before COVID, that's just my two cents. Um, we received five million dollars of COVID relief money that kept the district off the ballot. Now, I will tell you from experience in other districts, that money was really, um, pinpointed focus to go to recovery of learning. Edgewood used theirs a lot towards salary just to keep afloat. So I have to tell you, it's put us into, um, a state of urgency at this point in time. So as you know, we have one percent earned income on, on the ballot for May second. No matter what happens, we have to recover some funds even just to set forward. So this proposal, this motion is to, um, ask for a budget reduction. And that's just to kind of balance before we get started before the May ballot. So I'm recommending, I'm looking for a motion, sorry, to approve a one point two, one point three, uh, dollar budget reduction in order to reduce the deficit spending for the upcoming school year. This would involve sixteen positions, administrative position, exempt administrative position, certified positions, classified positions, and, um, SRO positions. And also, we're looking to find savings in transportation. We think we can save a hundred and fifty thousand in, um, basically putting more students on our bus, rerouting buses. And we may be able to find another fifty thousand in what we privatize transportation in. So we're really looking at those transportation, um, contracts as well. We can increase our activity fee from fifty to one fifty with no caps. Proposing a negotiated wage freeze for non-margining units. And we need to really limit our overtime and really look hard on what we're approving for that. That should get us to a one point three million, uh, savings. So I'm looking for a motion at this time to approve the proposed cost reductions.
So moved.
All right, sorry, you're, you're fine. Um, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the one point two million dollar budget reduction in order to reduce the deficit spending for the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar year. Mr. York, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler? Any discussion?
Can you, I mean, we've had this discussion many times. Um, the, the reductions that we're doing, we are not cutting any programs. Correct. What I think is, we are looking at more students in the class. Also with that, we're gonna look at our open enrollment. So just because people are on the open enrollment this year doesn't mean they're automatically approved next year because we have to look at our class sizes as well.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry that we haven't talked about this before now in this meeting, but in light of, uh, terrible tragedy in Nashville today.
Yes.
Um, it's, it's troublesome to think about, uh, cutting our SROs and I know.
Absolutely.
I know. Hopefully, there's all kinds of things we can do, uh, to try to maintain a presence and of law enforcement and, uh.
If the state budget comes through as proposed today, we can bring an SRO back. But as it is today, it's not funded by the state.
I got a question. Does this include the eight hundred thousand that was cut prior or is it separate?
This is separate. That was cut last year. That was a different budget.
One point three on top of the.
Two million dollars in the last two, it's, yeah, two million dollars in the last two years.
Okay.
Trying to recoup some of that deficit spending.
So this, if we cut this right now and the levy passes, we are not in deficit spending next year, is that correct?
No, we'll still be in deficit spending.
But not at the rate we are today. But there are other things coming down the road that cause us not to be in deficit spending, correct? The state budget.
I, I mean, we would like to say, yeah, hospital one is gonna come through and it's gonna help fund SROs. These are just assumptions at this point. We don't wanna bank on something that we don't have from legislation. We could eventually see recovery from this lost revenue from the Rocky Pipeline. We're losing five hundred thousand, more than five hundred thousand dollars per year from that. We hope that inflation slows down. It's just, again, moving pieces. Um, we'll have a better idea when the May forecast.
So we, so we'll be in deficit spending, but not at the rate of two point eight, which is what's earmarked without making these reductions.
So, so how much does the Rocky pipeline lose right now?
Um, I don't know if it came in three years ago or if it's more than a million dollars.
It's two years, it was more than a million dollars.
It's worth a billion dollars, yes.
Pretty handy right now. So, did you?
That, my biggest concern with this Rocky Pipeline, and some of you may have heard this. Um, Nexus actually went first and filed the, um, appeal on their values. Um, they were two years ahead of Rocky Pipeline. That made it all the way to the Supreme Court. It has gone on to Supreme, the higher, uh, Supreme Court, and they're saying now that that will not be resolved for at least two years. The next year, Rover came in behind them, did the same thing, filed an appeal. The next year, Rocky Pipeline came in behind them. So my concern is if they're saying that Nexus Pipeline issue won't be resolved for five years, we're a couple of years behind them. So again, it's, it's moving pieces. I would love that this gets resolved earlier, but we don't know that.
It's obviously very frustrating that we're in this position. I mean, Kelly, you said it, we should have had this on the ballot years ago. If we're, if we're pushing these proposed cuts through at one point two million and the levy passes, and it still doesn't fix our problem. What, how do we, how do we fix that? We're, we're, cause my concern is, at some point, state's gonna come in and take us over. And I, I think that's a very real possibility, but am I wrong?
It's not gonna happen on my logic.
No.
That's what they say happens, yes. But that's, that's if we cannot balance our, ourselves. We're gonna get this balanced so that that does not happen.
So are we saying there are more cuts than what we're talking about in this proposal right now?
This is what we're saying. We are trapped to be two point six or eight million deficit spending next year.
Two point eight, no.
Two point eight, but so if we just keep moving with that deficit, we're not gonna be able to certify our budget in a few years. Then they come in and put us in fiscal watch and then fiscal, um, uh.
Caution watch.
Caution watch as an emergency. When we're in emergency, that's when people come in and they just take you straight down to state, not a moment, they do it for us, right? So what we're trying to do is, it's, it's like you have these balls in the air. We need to make some reductions. We also know that a new budget's coming in that will help a little bit if, if it goes in, as it says. We don't know what the next unfunded mandate is. So we're trying not to cut two point eight. That is gonna be very painful, but that's what it would take to get us, to get us cost neutral at that point in time. We're just saying, let's do a, a little bit of it. Let's get a new budget, let's look at where we are. Let's see if we can get some new revenues coming in on May second. If the revenues do not come in on May second, then we have another million dollar of cuts that we have to do. So rather than just go to the community and say, we're gonna do two point two today, I think it's only fair to give the community a voice and let's let them define what education needs to look like in Edgewood.
And I, I think it's important in the discussion to know, um, the sooner we have additional revenue, the better because that.
That multiplies.
It multiplies. And I was looking at an article, uh, there are ten districts in southwest Ohio that are looking for a levy to pass in May. And, uh, Franklin, for example, has a thirteen point nine mil levy, which is unbelievable.
Crazy.
Uh, so, um, and we would be headed in that direction if we, the further out we go.
We have to do something. We have to do something. We have to triage it. Is it the right answer? No, we're, we're asking for some reductions. Let's see where this goes with the new budget. Let's see where it goes in May. If, if that doesn't pan out, then we're gonna have to come back with another million dollars of reductions. I, I would like to put out on April twenty eighth, a survey to the community, asking for them to prioritize the academic programs in the district. I'd like to put together a community engagement committee, which I already have about twelve people that have emailed me just from previous, uh, communication that's gone home, saying they wanna be a part of it. We need to sit down and start working. How do we define education? What does that look like? And then what do we have? It's just like your budget at home. Are we buying two gallons of milk this week or one gallon or not? We have to start making those decisions. We can't continue business as usual with less revenue coming in and inflation costing business increasing. It's, it's not, it's not magic. It's just what it is.
And in, and in, in all fairness, I mean, eighty-five percent of the money that's spent in this district is spent on salary and benefits. Unfortunately, that's gonna be some of the cuts.
I've talked with a, a lot of treasurers and one thing I will say, this, this whole year, our benefits only went up eight percent. There is no other district around here that did that. Uh, in prior administration, I, I didn't have any part of it. Uh, but they did a good thing when they pulled us back to EPC because these other districts did and saw twelve and fifteen percent increases in benefits. I don't know that we will be that fortunate again next year again. It's inflation and everything is going up. I would also like to add that, you know, we're looking at all this and we're doing everything that we can based on what we think is best for the student. We've come back and added preschool spots. We're trying to get another one because we believe in that early intervention and getting the kids a good start. We have all day preschool, we, or kindergarten. We don't have to do that. We only have to have half day kindergarten. We do it because it's what's best for the students. It's not just about the language arts and the math and the science. We have all of these electives. There, there's a cost with that in the, in the elementary, in the middle school. You can think about all the gifted programs, all the extracurriculars, uh, not just, um, sports. But we offer so many clubs and other programs, National Honor Society and, I mean, these.
As we should.
Yeah, it, it's because we're wanting to feed into the whole child, not just, we want them to excel in their core academics. But we want to give these kids something. I mean, there's, there's just so much out there that we don't want them to not be able to experience with their peers.
But this is truly Edgewood Communities School. I think there comes a time we have to ask our families and our community members, what do you want education to look like here? And what are you willing to pay for?
Well, I know this has been a huge learning experience for me because I'm, I don't know about you guys, but I think there isn't, I think maybe Tom's the only one that's been on the board while trying to pass a levy. I mean, it's been what, like eighteen years since Edgewood's asked for new money? So I mean.
Two, two thousand five, yeah.
Yeah, so two thousand five, but I'm curious to know like how many districts in the state of Ohio can say that they haven't asked for new money since two thousand five? I mean, that's pretty remarkable, if you ask me.
Don't quote me on this, but I think there's six.
In the state?
That's been off the ballot since two thousand five for good money. So with, with these cuts, we're saying that AP classes and CCP, all that kind of stuff is being.
No programs are being taken out. There may be some programs shipped in grade levels. Um, and also there may be some higher class sizes for sure, but not the elimination of any course.
So the SRO thing, you, the, the class sizes will get larger though, correct?
Correct.
And that, I would, I would assume that affects education in the classroom.
Correct.
More kids, fewer teachers, student to teacher ratio, uh, is gonna, is gonna change. You know, that, I, I still think that's gonna have an impact in the classroom or, or, unless I'm just missing it, but I think that's gonna have an impact. The, the thing that kinda really bothers me really more than anything is I'm talking about cutting an SRO and I think that the safety piece of this, that, that really concerned me. I don't, it doesn't sound like we have a choice. It doesn't sound like it's really.
Well, even if the state comes through with the budget they proposed, it would fund four officers, not five.
So have we decided where those officers will go, how that will work?
We need to work with our agencies to determine. But there would need to be a full time at the high school and a full time at the middle school. Question is, how would the rest of it look? So we would work with our agencies that we contract with and define that.
You know, I, I'll say this, that Mr. Phil Pott and Ms. Beckett was in my social studies class and there were seventy people in that room.
It's cause you were such a good teacher.
I had a, I, that's true, but, but I had another, another guy in there, uh, either Willis or Mr. Wesley, but we had that many, we had thirty-five in our, our room.
I had thirty-six as a first grade teacher.
So it has been, it has been worse.
It's not ideal, but it's been done.
But look how smart they are and what they've achieved.
I, I do know the classes that I teach at Miami, the student, the max student size was twenty-five students until COVID came in and they moved it to thirty. I can tell you that from my perspective doing the grading and the assignments, five students doesn't seem like a lot of significantly more time.
I think it should be eighteen to twenty-two, but no one's asked, uh, we, and no schools can run that, but ideally, I think that's a, a great.
So what do we think our class sizes will look like if we make these reductions?
Well, we have some small class sizes, either electives or special ed type of things, so we're not counting that. The average class is probably gonna be up there twenty-seven, twenty-nine and maybe even thirty.
So with this hundred and fifty thousand that we're talking about in transportation services, are we, are we cutting routes out or are we taking buses anywhere? How, how are we gonna?
We're still working on that. Uh, there's three scenarios that have been discussed with the director. Uh, one is just fill the buses. Right now, our map is around forty-eight on a bus. State law says you can have seventy-six. Um, I understand that may not be ideal, but we can, again, what do we wanna deliver for the amount of money we have? So we can pack the buses and look at that. We also can look at, um, taking K twelve and moving the pickup out. Right now, we're picking up around a half mile by law. It really only needs to be two. So that has not been honed in, but we know we can get about two hundred thousand savings from looking at a variety of scenarios.
How, how many kids do we plan for to get on the bus? You said seventy-six was state law, we could do forty. How many are we actually?
I don't, I don't suggest seventy-six. I think, I think sixty-something would be okay.
Since I've gone this far, we've had two bus accidents. Actually, we've had three. I don't think we need that many kids on a bus.
I believe, you know what, I don't have those figures in front of me, Mr. Messerschmidt, but I know there's four hundred bus riders at the high school. And I wanna say seven hundred and something from the middle school and then our elementarys, I'm sure. Uh, our intermediate, I understand, is the most transported.
How many kids are getting off the bus in the mornings? Do you ever notice when they come up in front of the middle school? Is it twenty, thirty, forty?
Each bus?
It just roughly did.
The buses are pretty crowded, cause I ride buses all the time. I don't ride in the morning, but I ride them home and, uh, they're pretty crowded. I mean, our buses are crowded. Our kids, I mean, we have a lot of drop-offs too, but our kids get dropped off and they go into the gymnasium in the morning for ten, fifteen minutes and it's, it's, it's pretty cool.
So it doesn't sound, doesn't sound like we put too many more on there.
Depends on the school.
Yeah, big kids, you know, they have back.
Yeah, big kids, you know, they have backpacks.
Big backpacks that might have instruments. They might have athletic equipment.
Principal throwing a ride
I'm gonna get off in your bus.
The, mine, mine are crowded too because they belong to kids from Yeah, it depends on the area. The certain buses are, certain buses are horrible.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry. Uh, I know. We're talking about like student class sizes, um, and I know a lot of the, the elementary at twenty-eight, so are we gonna cap that? Will we say that for yet for that? That's what I'm just trying to see, like, just, I, I remember different schools, so I'm just trying to figure out, like, when you guys are talking class sizes, you're saying like, oh, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, but I know a lot of them are at twenty-eight, twenty-nine now, right?
Right. The, the numbers we're looking at, just so you know, is, um, none of them were over thirty. Now, that doesn't mean just because our math worked this way, it's not going to be, but that was not the intent to every over thirty there, I know. Sorry, I know we weren't supposed to do that.
Yeah, you're fine.
Okay, so I was looking for a motion on this. We still have questions? Good questions?
I've got it. Do we have any more discussion? I do, I really appreciate you guys. I know you, Patty, I know you've been beating your very best for it, and I know this has been exceptionally hard, so I do appreciate the information, and you guys are very well prepared to talk for this much. Appreciate that.
Well, you know, none of us like this. Patty and I are both grandparents and parents, and we wanna educate all kids. And we understand that that comes in different sizes, shapes, needs, and this has not been easy. But also, we cannot continue spending more than we're bringing in. So it's just like the budget talks you have at home. Mr. Spidey and I get in arguments all the time about it. We just have to agree to disagree and come to some sort of, uh,
And it's against the law. We're not allowed, we're violating the law. We do that.
Exactly. Well, I'll just second that. I do appreciate everything's been put together for us. And I, I've driven by here at seven o'clock in you guys' cars we've been here, so we appreciate it. Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gaver?
Yes.
Mr. Dashcrack?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries by zero.
Well, we already talked about this, but I did not ask for a motion to group D and E together. But as discussed, I'm looking for a motion to approve upon the need on May third to move forward with an additional one million cuts. This would involve, uh, putting together a community engagement group. It would also involve cutting, um, another administrator. We have to look at certified staff classified as well. We will go to state minimum, which means no high school transportation, two mile radius, uh, pickup only for K-eight. Um, we need to do something around extracurricular. Is it, do we increase it to nine hundred per sport, or do we offer it at all? So I'm not saying one or the other, I'm just saying which, we have to do something. I'm not saying which one. We have to do one of the two. Uh, we need to do a cafeteria audit. We're obviously spending more than we're bringing in. I understand a lot of that has to do with inflation, but we wanna know exactly why that's happening, as well as a transportation audit. And, um, we already talked about the community engagement, uh, group. But that would also be looking at community input from the survey prioritizing academics.
All right, I'm gonna look for a motion to approve an additional one million dollars of budget cuts if the May second levy does not pass.
Send that.
Mr. Pressler, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
I got a question. Uh, items four and five, cafeteria audit and transportation audit. I mean, is that something regardless if the levy passes, we can go through and try to figure out why it is?
I, actually, we already have, um, a, a person coming in to look at our, our spending in the cafeteria. And I have someone that is available for transportation in May. So it's already kind of in, in the planning, but yes.
This is a third party?
That's just being transparent. But yes, we're doing that.
This is a third party audit?
Yes, yes, not our audit.
Is it from the state?
No. Uh, one is through our attorney, our legal counsel, and the other is, um, through K-12 Consulting. They have someone on legal counsel strictly that does transportations and audits in law.
So I just, I'll be very honest with you, and this is one of the things that's probably caused me the most anxiety looking at this. Um, you know, we, we've kinda talked about some of these things, and, you know, in my opinion, the most important thing we do here, obviously, is the education. And, and we're making cuts, even if the levy passes, that will have an impact in the classroom, and that's just where we are. Second most important thing that I think we have to have here is, you know, the safety of our kids, because these are the most important things in my life and every other parent that's here. Um, you know, we're, we're talking about taking SROs out of buildings, which I think makes us less safe. I mean, there was a school shooting today, uh, in Nashville. There was one last weekend in Colorado. God, God forbid it ever happened here, but, you know, it, it, it is a possibility that every school deals with. And in addition to that, we're talking about, you know, if we have to get to this point, we're gonna cut busing out. And if we do that, we're gonna have kids that
Not all busing, but yes.
So, well, some of the, within two miles, right?
Yes, yes, and K-8 owners.
There, there will be kids that have to walk to school, and it's dark, and it's cold, and it's raining. Um, there will be kids that ride bicycles, you know, we, we will take away a lot of the, you know, the transportation that keeps these kids safe to and from school. And that really, really bothers me, but the, the, you know, the third thing that we're, we're talking about here, you know, this, I mean, we've got over three hundred student athletes, we, you know, at, at, in seven through, uh, seven through twelve. We had Larry in here tonight, you know, recognizing all these students. And I know that Ross is charging eight hundred or eight hundred and fifty dollars to play sports. Talawanda, I guess, is nine and a quarter now, so, I mean, it's kind of the, it's kind of the norm. But I think the difference in, in our district right here is that, you know, forty percent of our students are on free and reduced lunch. I mean, we have kids that can't afford to eat at school. I, I don't think it's reasonable to think that nine hundred dollars for pay to play is, is reasonable. I've, I've asked coaches, I've asked parents, I've asked people in the community. If we had to go to a pay to play and it was, you know, six hundred or more, how many, how many kids do you think we would lose? And, and I think that number would be a lot. Um, I, I think, for example, our football team potentially could lose as many as twenty-five players. So I, I don't know that we're, I don't know that we would be putting our best teams out on the field. I don't know if we would be putting a good representation of who we are as a community out on the field. But the thing that really bothers me the most is I think we're, we're kind of dividing our community in a way of who can afford to play and, and who can't. And I think there are probably a lot of kids that are at risk, you know, for a lot of different reasons that would fall into that category of not being able to play. And I feel like at nine hundred dollars for a sport, I think we would leave a lot of our kids behind. I can tell you that, you know, when, when I was a kid, if I would have been able to play football because I couldn't afford it, and I saw all my friends out there on Friday night, that would be a very, very hard thing for me to, to deal with. And, you know, I, I'm struggling with this whole nine hundred dollar thing. I, I hope this levy passes and we're not talking about this anymore, but I, I just think nine hundred dollars is just way too much. And I, I'm just being as transparent as I can, and I, I do appreciate the fact that we're having this conversation because I think we are being extremely transparent, but I just, I can't support a nine hundred dollar pay to play fee. That's just too much. The thought of leaving that many kids out of programs who really need those to stay motivated and engage in school, I just can't, I can't support that. It's just too much. We gotta figure out something else.
I'd like to say something too. I'd have to agree with Mark, but, uh, what I'd really like to say is, first of all, I'm very frustrated. Very frustrated that, I understand our rank for board. I'm in this position. It's my job to take care of it and make sure that it doesn't get any worse. Uh, you know, that's something that's important and, you know, we're working really hard at, uh, but even being in this situation is tough. I agree that, you know, I just don't think nine hundred dollars is feasible. I mean, I just don't. And for that reason, I wouldn't support pay to play. I feel like, you know, that's not where our priorities should be. I feel like it should be on education. I know there's probably a lot of people in this room right now that knows me that probably thinks that's crazy coming from me, but that's the way I feel. And, uh, you know, me being frustrated isn't gonna do anything. You know, it's not gonna change anything. So, uh, all I can do is, you know, come here, work together, and, and try getting this issue resolved. And I just, I, I pray that, uh, levy passes, I gotta say.
I do support, if we take this, I mean, if we're gonna take this to vote, I do support cutting the additional one million. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with making that vote, but, um, you know, I think that there's gonna be a lot of discussion. We're either gonna have to figure out a way to bring that number down, or we're, we're not gonna have extracurriculars. And I think that's really kind of where we're, where we're at. And hopefully, this has been transparent enough with people in the community that they see how serious that this is, and hopefully we pass this levy and it's a done deal. We don't talk about it anymore.
Well, I, I think this affects a lot more than, than sports. This follows on ban corollaries.
Student government.
I mean, it, it's, there's a number of activities, extracurricular activities, that is not a sport. So if my kid was a junior in this district, I'd do take a loan out to make sure he had his last year at Edgewood. That's what I have to do, to make sure. So, I mean, obviously, there's some differences of opinions up here, and we'll work it out. I mean, we know what's gotta be done. It's been, been said several times tonight that we should have been on the levy this year, that year. Well, I was on the board, and I was never told that we was, we needed to put, be put on the levy in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. We was told that in twenty twenty-three, we was gonna have to probably be going to levy, go for a levy, so, um, kind of felt attacked a little bit at that, but, I mean, that's, that's the way, that's the way it is. When I, I'm, you know, I can go off what I'm told. I'm no financial expert, just a community member, just like you guys.
I think also, you know, when, when we look at nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, uh, there are a lot of people that weren't working. It would have been, uh, heartless to ask people to pay more money.
And their kids weren't even going to school.
They weren't going to school. Parents weren't able to work. Uh, it, it would have been a heartless thing for us, even if it were brought to us in twenty twenty-one. Too many people were affected by COVID. I hate to keep blaming COVID, but it did, we are still feeling the effects of that. And so, um, Gary, I don't, I don't think we have to feel guilty about not putting the levy on in those years. It, it wasn't humane to do that, you know, and, uh, so.
And you can't guess inflation, and you can't guess, they don't fund the Band-Aids and all the other
No, there isn't a decision that we're gonna make up here tonight. There isn't one person up here tonight that's like excited to make any decision we're making right now. Every decision we're making is, we have to, so.
Well, and I just, I have a real hard time making a decision and voting on something that hasn't happened yet. And, you know, like, we're saying what if, I, you know, I see what happens when there's no extracurriculars and kids don't have anything to do after school. I represent those kids, and they are getting into trouble, and they don't have anything to do, and they're exploring other, other activities. I represent those families as well. And I don't know that either of those options are, per, you know, are appropriate for our district because I don't think you can cut out extracurriculars. I know that education is what we're here for, but if we don't put busses on those desks and some of the high school kids won't show up if there's not an activity to be had, because they don't care about the education, or, I mean, for the most part. They're here because they wanna play basketball, or they wanna play football. They wanna be something else. And we're here to educate, but we're also here to create well-balanced kids. And if all we're doing is sitting on the chairs to educate them, and we don't offer anything else as far as activities, I don't think we're doing that. I don't think we're doing our job. And I think somewhere, there's money to be had that we can find, that we can make cuts on something and find, and not have nine hundred pay to play, or not have extracurriculars at all. And I know that you guys have done a fantastic job cutting stuff, but I think we're gonna have to be creative. And I don't see that as, either one of those as an option for our district. So I just think, you know, sitting up here talking about what ifs and what happens, and this, if it doesn't pass, then we're gonna do this. I don't know that I'm comfortable making that decision tonight.
But I also feel like the voters need to know, you know, I don't wanna throw something on them if the levy doesn't pass and we go, oh, hey, wait, we're in bad financial trouble. We're cutting this and that, and they're saying, wait, why wasn't this brought up to us before we voted? I, I don't wanna surprise them with anything. I mean, one of the biggest things we've been trying to work on is transparency with the community.
Well, we're having this discussion. I don't know that it can't be a discussion, and that's what we're looking at. I don't know that we, I'm not ready to say right now, but we're gonna increase pay to play to nine hundred, or not have extracurricular activities, or that we're gonna cut busing. Like, this is how, that hasn't happened yet.
Correct. I understand that. And, and even if we don't get to there, we can find savings and other avenues and stuff. But I think sometimes, you know, it's, it's, the, the right decision to the best decision is usually the hardest decision. And I think us trying to avoid, you know, the hard decisions is maybe what got us in this situation. And sometimes it's easier to just go with that easy decision and just kind of, you know, go with the flow. When maybe if we would have made these hard decisions in the past, we wouldn't be in this situation.
Uh, I would like to propose that maybe you, um, revise your motion.
Well, there, there's not a, there's not another, there's not another election before school starts. If this fails May second, we, we have what we have. So we, we need to be very transparent with folks and let them know where we're at because I, I don't want an auditorium full of people very upset with us in June or July because we're coming back and we're cutting busing, or we're cutting sports, or we're nine hundred dollar pay to play. We've, we've gotta be transparent.
The million has to come from somewhere, so if it's not that, when is it?
I, I feel that, I feel that this is, this is transparent on a level we've never seen before. I think we are being extremely transparent. We've laid all of our cards out on the table. But based off of the, the work that's been done up to this point, these are the things that would have to be cut. And really, I think where the point of contention comes down is, if it's truly nine hundred dollars is what we say we've gotta have to be able to afford the supplemental contracts, we either are nine hundred or we're in a sports. And I think that's where the, I think that's where the friction amongst the board is. And it's my personal opinion, if it comes down to that, we're not all on the same page.
And our community won't believe us. We have a nice representation of what people feel.
So what's, what's the dollar figure for supplemental contracts?
Well, it depends on what you look at. Well, what pressure
I just, I like, just all of them. I, I don't want you to have to
About six hundred and sixty thousand dollars?
Six hundred thousand? Uh, okay.
That number doesn't include, uh, we have a lot of the other salaries and transportation and
Correct. Just supplemental
That's just, that's just contracts.
Yep.
That's a lot of money.
You know, I'm, I'm the only person up here not running for reelection, so I can be candid.
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, a million dollars is a lot of money to come up with somewhere. Uh, and we can, we can say we're gonna find it somewhere else, but I've been there and I've had to do that, and it's very difficult to do. Uh, so I, I commend you guys in putting together something, uh, because it doesn't say what we're going to do.
It says well.
It says, th- these are the possibilities, um, that could be out there. So, um, I think that that's, uh, that's something we have to keep in mind. But we always have heard in the past, you're threatening us. Or if we didn't say what we were going to do, you didn't give us all the information. So there's a fine line in trying to be transparent, uh, and, uh, and not come across as being threatened. So I, I don't, I'm, I know everybody up here well enough to know that no one is threatening anybody. It's just what are the potentials out there? Um, the school district doesn't have, you know, if I have to go buy, if I need two gallons of milk for my family to live in a week, I, I'll use my credit card and have to figure out how to pay for it later. We don't have a credit card that can float us, uh, down the road because we can't even get it done. So that's, that's the tough job that we did. And, um, thank goodness that we passed the levy in two thousand and five. That allowed us to continue our programs as we had experienced them, uh, because we weren't going to have those things. And, and I had kids that were in their senior year, that were going to miss out on stuff. Thank goodness the community stepped forward. One of the things I, and I'll shut up here in a second, but, that beautiful auditorium we have over there, and that wonderful gym that Curtis is able to let his kids use, that, we had several meetings, and people were packed in the auditorium telling us we were wasting taxpayers' money. You're, you're only Edgewood, it's just fine to have choir concerts in the cafeteria, put the chairs out. That was, that was a button for me about telling me, Edgewood kids deserve sitting in the cafeteria instead of being in a really nice auditorium and performing. Today, we've got it, and we've had it for so long, we've kind of taken that for granted. But I knew what it's like to take the darts and the crap and the windows with soap on, talking about what they're gonna do to York and all that kind of thing, but-
Mom is next door watching him, he's very jealous.
Anyway, tough decisions, and, uh, a month from now, or two months from now, after the May election, and we find out that we passed it, and all this discussion we've, you know.
I think, I think what you can see though is, we need a million dollars, and it's gonna have to come from somewhere. It's starting to get into progress, may that be in the day or extracurricular. My problems, I'd assess, this will include the following areas.
So is everybody in agreement if I, if we amend the first line that says can, but not limited to the following areas?
Yeah.
On my main vote. Do you reckon a motion to-
I think we're splitting hairs.
I'm gonna make, I mean, we gotta cut a million dollars.
Well, do we gotta cut it from this list, or can it come from somewhere else?
We've got, we've got nine, nine hundred dollar per student laying around somewhere, I mean, I'm willing to kind of check, but-
Change will to good.
I think, I think- Yeah, that's, that's what, that's all I wanted to do.
Yeah, I, I'm, I mean, I think we're splitting hairs, but I'm fine with doing that.
Can I get a motion to? As amended, from will to good. Mr. Pressler, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messer Schmidt, any more discussion on this? And it could be all of it, I don't know. Mrs. Bowers, do you call roll please?
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Magischmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
We just amended it for you. So if you don't vote for it, we just amended it for you.
I'm thinking. I still don't think I'm satisfied with that. I'm gonna vote no. Not that I'm one of those, a few of those dollars, but I don't think- I don't think that we can do it yet, I think it's put in the cart before the horse, sorry.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries four one.
Okay, are we ready to move on? That, that was exhausting, listen, never fun to talk about budget. Um, next item is, are we gonna group, propose that we group F, six F, and six G? These are annual tasks. By law, we have to provide that, we've talked about our open enrollment policy. Our policy says an open enrollment policy that permits the enrollment of students from any district in Ohio, and only one building for all students in each grade level, and therefore does not need to adopt an intra-district open enrollment policy, meaning we do exchange students by district. We don't do it by building anymore because you're now-
The second one, yeah, because-
You're now bi-gradeable, so that kind of takes that one out. And then the other is option A, which I believe has been approved by our association and staff. So I'm looking for a motion for items six F, G, on open enrollment certification and the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar option A.
Can I get a motion for the enrollment certification and the calendar year of twenty-four, twenty-five?
Seven.
Does Ashcraft have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messer Schmidt, discussion?
I didn't understand, I think you just said Kelly, is this any different than what we've done in the past?
No, we're basically approving our open enrollment policy, which we, it's, it's the same policy we have approved the last several years. We have to show that it's board-approved, and we do accept students from other districts.
So it's the same thing we've always done?
Yes, and then the other is basically, there was two calendars to choose from. It looks like the staff has approved calendar A, and we're looking for a motion to approve this as presented.
But every time an open enrollment student applies, someone looks and sees if that's gonna cause us to have another teacher, or?
I can't say how that's been done in the past, but Patty and I have a date in the spring. In fact, we moved up the open enrollment applications because of the staffing issue, and we are looking at numbers. And it's based on a first, kind of first serve. It's also based, obviously, staff members get to have their children attend, as well as do we have room in that grade level or classroom? And if we are at a certain number, we're gonna deny it and tell families they can reapply in August and see how many we actually have attend our school, so that we don't get above thirty in a class.
And if there are truancy issues or, or discipline issues, there are-
Legally, you're not supposed to do that. So, basically, what you do is, you can't accept anyone thereafter. We're not supposed to make difference. So if that happens, we just don't accept the rest after that application.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Magischmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
My superintendent update, I'm going to eliminate the legislative update and just talk a little bit about community engagement and student learning. I had the pleasant experience to go into Seven Mile a few weeks ago, met with about thirty people in the community, and just talked about what are the highs and lows of education in Edgewood schools. And I'm making that offer with anybody who wants to have coffee chats throughout the school district. They're the only ones that have taken the up on it so far. But I learned a lot, and it doesn't matter if you agree or disagree, the feeling and hurt is evident in our community. And as I've gone around and listened to staff and talked to staff, trust seems to be an issue. I can't tell you why or why not, and I just want to make a better effort to be transparent and to have open conversations. We may not always agree on everything, but there's times that at least people will know what's coming down the pipe, and we have to agree to disagree to, to move on. So, I learned a lot and enjoyed my evening, but we have some repair to do, I would say, amongst people in our community. So, I'm gonna make myself available for those that wanna sit down and talk and listen. So a change that came from that was just revising the agenda. One community member said, we never know what's on the agenda until the minutes are posted. Why can't we be more transparent? So that's something we're doing. Putting that community advisory committee together. And, and then also the piece on student learning is, there seems to be some differences in our community in regard to the lack of focus that's our community members feel that we've put on learning, wherever that's coming from. May it come from our state report card, may it come from lack of course offerings, I don't know. But I, I just think that's interesting, so that's something we will work on and, and continue to listen, and, and create plans to address any deficits. So, just wanna put that on the radar, and that concludes my items for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Spiderwood. Next, we have updates from board members. Mr. York, would you like to start?
Sure, I had the opportunity to go to Washington DC last week with Bumper Tech, representing Edgewood. And we met with Senator Vance's office, we met with Warren Davidson, and we met with Sherrod Brown. And all through those meetings, we continued to advocate for more money. So, it's, they always say, don't ask for more money, because it turns them off, but we try to do it so that they, it's not right out there in their face when we ask for it. So, but it was a good experience to be able to do that again, so.
That's awesome. Did you learn anything, did you send any of our legislators straight on any of those issues?
Well, I, I'll probably say something that'll get me in trouble, but I'll go ahead and say it anyway.
You're not about to be done.
When we went, huh?
You're not about to be done.
Right, that's right, I can say one more time. J.D. Vance's office is in the basement, because they're gonna paint Senator Portman's office for him. And Senator Fetterman from New Jersey's office was right next door to Senator Vance. And I dared the board member from Monroe if he would stick his head in Mr. Fetterman's office and ask us, anyone was there? But no one was there, so he's still gone. Anyway, it was, it was a fun trip, we had a good time. You don't, if you don't understand it, I'll tell you later.
Rumor is, he's not around.
That's what I heard, he wasn't there, I know that.
Thank you, Mr. York.
Yep.
Mr. Messer Schmidt?
So, Mr. Cox kind of actually stole my thunder when he brought all the students in here, student athletes, to recognize our winner students. I went through the list that he sent out, we've got over thirty student athletes that received recognition all conference and, and some really phenomenal results. And then obviously, a three point two four GPA is unbelievable. And when you wrap up, you know, the season that the core leers had, and just all the great things that are going on in the district, it really just bothers me like you wouldn't believe to have the kind of conversations in here that we had to have tonight. So I'm hopeful that all the parents with kids in these activities will get out and, and vote. And, you know, if we can keep things the way that they are, because we do have some really awesome programs going on here in this district, and I would sure hate to see that interrupted. And I, I, we've all said it a half a dozen times, but Kelly, you and Patty, the work that you guys have done, the hours that you guys have put in, both on this, this levy and these forecasts, and then your engagement in the community, getting Ruth Pearson here tonight, you know, it's just unbelievable the amount of work that's, that's been taking place, and all the great things that are, that are happening. And we've, we've got something exceptionally special here, and I'd just really like to see where it's at, and I hope it keeps moving in the same direction.
Thank you, Mr. Messer Schmidt. Mr. Pressler?
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you to both you as well, for the amount of time and, and work that you've put in. I know that anytime I'm calling you guys, it's nine o'clock, or, you know, it doesn't matter what time you're answering the phone, you're constantly working, so I appreciate it, thank you.
I appreciate you guys doing this.
Never answer my calls.
Thank you, Mr. Pressler. Mrs. Ashcraft?
Um, well, I'm not gonna thank you guys because we do the whole time. I would say the parents, the principals and people working on the levy committee, because, you know, as board members, we're not allowed to get out and say certain things, which frustrates me beyond belief. But, you know, we gotta follow the law. So, I just appreciate everybody who's working on the levy committee to get that passed. I know that it's not a popular thing to do, and it's not a popular thing to make the decisions that we just set up here. And I know that I was four one vote, but I've worked with these guys, and they're phenomenal, and we've all had sleepless nights and not eaten, and not, you know, been to things with our family because we're having meetings and trying to figure this out. So just know that whatever we do, we're doing it because, you know, we care about the kids. And that's why I'm here, because I care about the kids. And I, I just want everybody to remember that, it's that, that's what this is for.
Thank you, Mrs. Ashcraft. Pretty much just to touch on a little bit of what everybody's already said, I mean, we've obviously had meetings twice before we come to you tonight, and it wasn't easy meetings. This was a very minor part of what you seen tonight, and what we've been going through at our, our executive meetings that we've been having. We know there's a lot of consequences with these decisions that were put, put, put on us, put to us. So, we're all taking them serious, and we will do the best we can for our community and most of our children. So, that's all I got. So, I will ask for a motion to move to executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of an employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against an employee, official, licensing, or student request of public hearing.
So moved.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messer Schmidt? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Magischmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, we are back from executive session at nine oh four. This time, I'm gonna look for a motion to approve the personnel items as presented.
So moved.
Mrs. Ashcraft, Mr. York, discussion?
So moved.
Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll please?
Mrs. Ash?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Magischmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.